We also, Bill and Tom. He's one.
Present.
Mike Netland present. Want some cheers? Bill, are you with us?
Oh, can you hear us? Bill, uh, check. Can you hear me?
Yep.
We got your. We good?
Yep.
One second.
All right, we'll start the pod.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hello.
Well, I had to tell you, I didn't pay attention. I saw the twenty fourth meeting from our product as my board meeting, then they said something about the. Work session today, I'm like. Yeah.
Aren't you on?
That is, we already actually gave you a report.
You said it, you sent the email, but I was just like, another thing, it didn't even dawn on me till they said it that that did say special meeting. Isn't it? Cause it's December typically, isn't it?
We put it in November because otherwise it'd be right at the holidays.
So, you know, when I said that my, I would just have time to have my budget approved, there's no meeting. After the next meeting, so it will be in January. Yeah.
Would you love more clarity? You had numbers still.
Races and everything, yeah, yeah, I don't have anything anyway, unless I do it backwards.
You have races coming over, they need to be approved.
Yeah, so unless I do it backwards and bring it to the council and then if I would have the information, bring it to the council that ninth, eighth? December?
Yeah.
Then what did we say? Yeah. And then it would go to the board meeting the following week and if it's springtime.
Yeah.
We're getting the council meetings on the eighth.
Yeah, kind of goodly approved.
Yeah.
Your board.
Yeah, I didn't really, well, they said that it just, oh, I didn't intention, I like, in my mind, this, the special meeting was in December.
Oh.
Cause it. You know, three months, so. I totally missed that, that was me. The thing, they said something, I want to come tonight. I'm back and looked at my email and, oh, yeah. So we do have some, um, they didn't, this I have on there, I am, we talked about this and it needs approval, um, for the. So undermine.
I'm, I'm sorry.
I need to, I have something that needs approval.
Oh, okay.
This is for the nurse call system.
Oh, are we talking about meeting?
Yep.
I, I can talk over, it's fine. Yeah, so this is the nurse call system, um, currently, I would only have one day, then I explained why, because the second one did not get a bid to, we'd have four weeks to do it. Um. And so this one is, we currently have a piece together call system, like does different, you know, we have. One that. We're going to push the pendants, it calls the phone, and the one pull cords in the rooms, this would replace all that, it's a wireless system. And, um, it is, has ability to have the voice to voice, uh, which is on the bottom there, I have contacted West Central. And they do not think it would take much, it, she has sixty eight thousand, that would be like if they had to run cat five into all the rooms, they are, they currently do have audio in the rooms. She said, he said to switch it to data shouldn't be. That bad, um, I don't know what that cost would be exactly, so there might be, there might be some cost to it, I'm hoping it's not sixty eight thousand, I'm guessing it's not because the wire is already run, so. But this would be for the existing, then we would hope to do the same beacon for if, for the addition. And I do need to have something in place to give the architect and the. The ones that are doing the technical. Work for the, um, building project, an idea who we're going to use, uh, Beacon is currently our provider for, or their, or. They support our nurse call system for their nursing home, so. Um, they currently support it, so they'd be the same ones to support it. I reached out to Ariel, it's actually. Um. Say it was. Security test. And they have an aerial system, I like the system, but I mean, four weeks, he hasn't gotten a quote back to me, so. He knew I actually, actually needed it last week was my cutoff date, well, last Monday, so. And I still haven't heard anything, so.
No, this works of internet doing that? Being wireless.
So our, currently our internet is, um. We have a, a full house backup cellular, uh, so it goes to a cellular, so if the internet goes down, it's supposed to automatically kick in. And it does, because when we get the cell phone bill, um, we have that device runs, has, has usage, and we're like, oh, must internet must have been down at some point, but we didn't realize it. For whatever reason, it kicks in. So it uses a cell phone towers as a automatic backup, it's just, it's a cradle point or something like that. Um, with Verizon.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just wondering, right, because, um, you know, uh, typically a wireless network can just, even if there's no connectivity outside. There should still be some kind of network inside, but I, I don't know your architecture at all. Well, I mean. Like, um, if the, you know, this was a wireless printer. And I'm printing from my office. Um, because we're connected to the same network, the internet has nothing to do with it. So I would still be able to print if the internet was out. And I would think that a system like this would also.
Oh, internal system?
Yeah.
And internet, I mean, could.
Yeah, this wireless not actually gonna help.
Yeah.
I mean, so.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not digging here or anything.
I mean, it's true, because I don't know like a phone system, how that works, if the internet goes out, probably still works, I don't know. So currently for our, we have the backup because our electronic health records are, is all on, is all web based.
Yeah.
So we have to have it. Where that they can get if internet, the thing is.
You, you, you need a plug to the outside.
You did it all the way, we know, it's not like our internet that goes down, West Central goes down, we need it all the way back, so that's, I mean, and if we, when we have problems, it's when the providers. When their actual internet goes down, that's when there's issues, but. So we've had it, we've dealt with it, so we have this. Verizon cellular, cause that usually doesn't go down. Has on occasion, but that's less likely than our internet or West Central's internet.
Very seldom at the same time, done what are done and saves.
Yes, we have a lot of backup for. That, so I feel like the answer to that is. Power out, where it's not, right now it's not John generator, but it's going to be on generator, so, um, so it wouldn't work at power outage, plus more than likely. Because.
Well, here it says you got the old VPN. Separate VPN access for Beacon. Will be in place, you probably already have one for. Or you would have one for that, so it wouldn't matter if internet was out, you'd have your own. Workful network.
So what part would, uh, West Central be planning or anything?
They would, they're gonna check to see what we have, um, for, um. Yeah, what, what our wiring is and what it would take, and I sent them, you know, a piece of the, where it says what we would need, and they said they would see if it needs. To see how hard it was to switch it from, um, voice to data.
They just ran cat five to all the rooms for their new boxes, didn't they?
Did that too, but they also would have all the bo, all those curves have, have cat five, so.
And you, you said you have the system?
We do not have, I'm like, hardware, hardware.
Okay.
No, um, a lot of places use it, it's very popular, very common, I mean, it has a lot of good features, there's. I, I'm not concerned about the system itself, especially, I'm, I'm not concerned about the support, the support is actually. It's Fargo is their office, so. And it's not like they're, I mean, and they have tech, technicians around the area. So support wise, I think it would be good. Their battery, their, their battery systems, but they're different than, I mean, they also have monitors to test if batteries are not, um, working, if they're low, so it will. Show when a battery is low that they can be replaced, right now ours. Batteries have to be replaced every so often, just to prove out that they don't work, because we don't have a, anything to ping them.
Yeah.
Things if there's one gone, um, around the facility, they would put locator, so if somebody pushed their pendant, but they were not in their room, but they were. Like in the garages and opposite side of the building, it would locate them. They would, if they have locators. Uh, which we don't have right now either, so outside, we will put some things on the doors to not. Locks, we're not gonna put locks on the doors, um, but we're some, they have the ability to put sensors on the doors, someone passes through, um, that would wear, you know. They work with Accutac, which is the, like a lead moment wander guide system. So.
I'll move the approval of the nurse call system with the audio to resident room. Addition.
I'll sit. I'll sit in it.
You want to discuss? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both saying same. There you go.
The other thing you two board members, do you want to discuss insurance today, or do we want to go to, um, the board, the, um. Council, council meeting and next one?
Yeah, we're gonna have to look at this one. Probably we did that.
She goes, follows some information with some price increase and whatnot, but maybe wait till the next meeting, so.
We're only getting a little bit of that from under her.
Yeah. I think we have one day there, I think that link is a night, so we get paid.
They're close, right?
Yep.
Uh, I'm gonna go ahead and read the resolution for Greenwood that we, uh. Uh, unless you wanna read it more, uh, no, okay, uh. Right, this is resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty five, uh, resolution accepting donations. Whereas the city of Minnaga gratefully acknowledges the following donation in support of Greenwood Connection Equities. Two thousand six hundred and seventy five from a Greenwood Connection resident designated for Woodside Manor. Hundred and sixty five dollars from a Greenwood Connection resident designated for Greenwood Connection activities. Whereas these contributions help support Greenwood Connection and the overall well being of the city of Minnaga. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council, the city of Minnaga, Minnesota, that the donation described above is hereby accepted with sincere appreciation. Adopted this, the twenty fourth day of November, twenty twenty five.
Will be exact.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both saying same. This is our chapter of many thanks.
Hey, I'm ready. Yes.
Fine, you're up.
You're ready.
Good evening, everybody.
Hello.
In front of you, you got a couple of pages here, one that has the proposed permanent sites. And the proposed primitive sites. Now, I. I put together this map, guys, if you can all see it. That this is where the permanent sites will be, and the primitives will be up here, this being the bathrooms and the park. Right there, there are obviously the lines and the blueberry pavilion and the park, so the primitives go straight across in the woods from site ten. And these will be between site seventeen and fifteen. That you'll see there. And that's where I'd like to get these. Placed, I have a lot of these, this whole area is already done with marked trees, orange paint all the way around them.
The primitive sites.
Yep, the primitives, and most of this area has been done, I've had a few problems with deer knocking my stakes over. And other larger creatures maybe, but, uh, I was in here today, working all the way. This back, uh, you guys can see, if you're looking at the proposed site. Over here at the end on the left side, like right over there, that's where the light. Will go like a, like the street lamp. And that's about five hundred and twenty feet. From where the road comes in by seventeen and sixteen, eighteen. And all that. Which is on the furthest west side and south. The fence line, Montagues is right around five hundred and fifty seven feet. So this puts us, this, this, uh. Cul-de-sac back there. Right in. Their clearing that they already had, when they cleared out those trees. We got that clearing right there. And that's basically where it's gonna be.
Uh, impacts to the disc golf.
Expansion. Very, very little to the impact of what the disc golf wants to do, they just, all they're gonna really do is, is along right through here. On this, on the north side of the, of the proposed permanent sites is all thirteen, and we're just gonna make them flip it. And then that'll clear out the path for us. This site on the very end, which is like right here, the one that they were clearing out. Over there where they stopped the work, that's basically now where we're gonna try and put our. Drain field for the sewer. So once that gets cleared out and everything, get the tanks. On that north side of the cul-de-sac there, and then run those drain fields out there.
Um, what would be the? Or instead of doing it late, instead of doing the cul-de-sac here. Putting an entrance right here, so it's just one way.
You know, see, you'll all drive.
Keep talking up now, but then we got no control.
Oh, that's why, that's why I ask is. What? I mean, ultimately, if you're gonna pull a trailer in there. Uh, one way is gonna be a lot easier to do.
Well, that's why we put the cul-de-sacs to the ones that are on.
Yeah, it's a sixty foot.
Go down and burn out.
But anybody even with the goose neck should be able to make that turn, no problem.
That's why I ask, I mean, you know. And, and. My thought, a, a drive through, we put a one way through there would be easier than.
It, it would be, but then we lose any kind of, we would never know when people are running through there or anything, and we'd like to set some trees up, once this is all done, plant some trees through there, just block in that area. Cause we'll get people parking all along here for disc golf, most likely, and they'll just start walking in there. Or they'll come in here and park when no one's really out there.
One thing I did notice is you need to square the backs of those off. You got, you got sixty feet on the pointy side. Cause they got a forty four foot trailer and a, and a pickup, they're gonna need it.
Yeah.
All the way back in there, so they'd have to go square instead of angled on the backside. A square with the. Square with the actual where they back in.
Oh, like that, sure, yeah, that'll definitely add.
I'll never have enough room. But you'll step to a few more trees or whatever.
Right.
Otherwise with a big camper, they're not gonna fit.
Can't tell by looking at your drawing, what is the radius of the? Turn around.
It's sixty feet wide. So it's thirty.
So a thirty foot radius?
Yep.
Same as we require for fire trucks.
The large pickup with a fifth wheel should be able to do something. That easily.
Yeah, and we'll make sure that when we get this all set, that, that, if they even go off the gravel, they're not gonna sink.
Or you're talking about extending this arm out and squaring it off, I care about.
Just like that.
Like that?
Yeah, so that they can, so they can fit all the way.
Just gives them a bit more room.
Yeah. Yeah, cause right now, as it is, it's a hundred and eight feet wide. And angling them causes us to go even further deep, but we've still within that marker of. Of acceptance from their fence line, so. The easement from the fence line, but so, yeah, that'll just add. Probably another ten, fifteen feet each way.
Yeah, which don't need, that's why I figured if you're. Only five feet wide and you're around that forty five, that, that side's pretty short. Not without scoring them off.
Who will be laying in the water?
Right now, I'm not, I haven't talked with anybody about the water yet, but I have talked with. Uh, Jade Rose about the sewer, getting the sewer line, so I will talk with them about the water as well.
About the power?
The power, I, I've spoke with, uh, Sean on the phone as a message, I haven't heard back from him yet, and I know he kinda doesn't wanna really do anything out there at the park. Cause that was usually all of, uh, air graviness, which was less as electric at one time, now it's Beck. And I know the last time that we used them, I think there was a problem between. Him and Ralph with site four, when that got damaged, he was quoted one price and it came back almost double after it was all said and done.
We also got Burge, Burge tomorrow.
That's who Eric works for, right? Burge?
Eric Burgestrom, yeah, no, no.
Yeah, Burke's electric, yeah.
Yeah, I think Eric works for Burgestrom.
Whoever it was, I, I thought it was Beck still, but did he leave them, guys?
Well, as far as I know, he's still with Burgestrom's.
Okay. And there also is seventeen.
All his energy too. So, I have some calls in, I'm gonna meet with some of the guys, I would, I talk with Les. From L and D, he, he's gonna give me us a quote on the tanks and the. The drain field, so.
We have it, salute.
Yeah. Be understood, and then I've got calls into the county. Talking to a Dean Malone, hopefully I won't be, I won't be able to talk to her again until Monday, December first. She's gone, but she's with the Wadena County planning and zoning, so we can get all that stuff done, and I work with the Department of Health as well. Uh, Stephanie there, I didn't catch her last name, and I got a whole list of things I gotta go through. Because we have a well at the park, so I gotta figure out how far this is away from the well. And they're also gonna want, uh, the well and boring construction records, and I don't know how old that is, so that's gonna take some digging.
Yeah, we should have record it somewhere, if it was, if it was, um.
Could have been registered.
They'll register, they, they register.
Yeah.
Depth and all that.
Well, just board, my license drill, it should be registered with standard, so.
Right. Oh, yeah, like I said, I'll take some, cook a little dig in, and then I gotta get distances from, uh, our, our V dump sewer to the sewer that's at the facilities for the bathrooms, and then the distance from there. To our new section, so.
While hoops to go through.
There's still like quite a few things, uh, as well as while we're talking with the Department of Health. These new proposed sites will not have any impact on our utilities, so we don't have to upgrade the utilities or anything, because these will have sewer, they don't even come.
So we have to ruin our bathroom or anything else.
Exactly, and the primitives still fall into.
Or will be, each site will be, uh, pumped for sewer?
Yeah, each one of these new ones will have water, sewer, and electric.
Full service.
Full service.
Okay.
Which is why we're hoping to make a permit, maybe even people wanna purchase them for the year and leave their campers there, but that.
Do we have any information on that DNR grant, are they doing it again?
DNR grants aren't open, I can't even do anything with it until the first of December.
It's coming up.
Yep. Yep.
We said, purchase them, I don't think we'd wanna sell them, but certainly could rent them out on a seasonal basis.
Exactly.
I think that's, that's.
That's, yeah, basically, I was, yeah. That's.
Are you gonna mean sell them?
No, I didn't mean sell them, but just rent them out as seasonal. There's also a zoning consideration to that too, I know that, uh, some campsites, if you're there for over, uh, you know, two months, for example. Uh, you can apply to get a permit to build a deck, uh, with your camper there, so.
But there again, uh, campground can trump that. By saying no decks.
Of course.
Or they can limit the size of the deck, that's up to the campground owner.
Yep, yeah, yeah, and let's call that a zoning ordinance.
But they do, I, I used to have a camper, they do come around and they will tax you on your camper, unless you have a current license plate on it. Yeah, that's true.
No, I, I.
And if you build a deck, they're gonna tax you on it.
In the land of the land that.
Yeah. That's for sure. Uh, but so far, as I ran some numbers here for how much. All the materials are gonna cost, and I, and I came up under right around. Ninety two hundred, but that was without the electric pedestals, and I'm figuring those are like five to seven hundred a piece, maybe more.
And you covered the septic tanks in that?
Yeah, the septic, I had two eight five by five cement takes it at, uh. Twenty five hundred a piece.
You got quotes on that, did you, or no?
No, this is just shopping. This window shopping, and then, uh, both, once I get these quotes from like Lee and Josh. And all those guys and, and figure out who we're gonna hook up with the electric, cause right here on this site. There's seventeen's at. Right here. Right over here, we got a big old electrical box and everything, I'm hoping we can tap from.
Are, are you planning on doing? The installation yourself, or are you gonna have that hired by someone?
No, I'm planning on, uh, trying to contract out the electric, the sewer, the water, the.
No, but I mean, the, the actual, the, the construction of the sites.
I was hoping to be able to just kinda roll through that and do it ourselves. But if we need to get someone professional in there.
Are you talking the road?
Yeah. Yeah, the actual, the actual construction, I mean, I know the, the electrical, the sewer, I mean, that's different.
You're talking the road.
But the actual construction of the road. That's what I, is, is, yeah.
Are you planning on five, as a road, or are you planning on five packet, you cover it over with crushed concrete?
Hoping to pull on all the darn topsoil, because it's really uneven in there.
Yeah, you gotta do that.
And then we'll just lay down our class five and pack it in.
Plus concrete on top of it may not be a bad idea.
Whatever we need to do, you know, I mean.
Well, I know a place that lots of.
You want?
I know a place that has lots of correct.
Yeah.
That's good stuff for a guy.
Really good on top of class five, it's, I mean.
So I, I, I just suggest that you take a look at what that one additional cost would be to. Bring in fresh concrete. I think you got a guy here to probably get you a good price.
I think so. But even, even, I mean, if you're gonna. And, and all, uh, you're just gonna build a road, I mean, like a, like a fill sand or something like that, just a. I mean, you wouldn't need the actual. Class five to build it up.
To build it up, you still.
Fill sand, and then, you know, you could get that.
Yeah, you know, three, four inches, maybe a class five.
Maybe your crush concrete, I doubt you, they have a good road.
Mm-hmm. No, we want it to be good, because some of those guys is rigged, they're heavy.
Yeah, yeah, and that's what crush concrete will do.
Excuse me.
But I mean, if, if you feel that. What, what I would recommend to do is figure out a price for. The construction of the road. And the sites, so that way you know. What you can do. And bring those numbers to us as well.
Okay.
That way, that way you can say, okay. If we're hoping to have it done by the end of the summer or middle of the summer. Well, I don't know, your time span, what you're looking at, but that's what I would recommend to do is get some prices for that too.
You have a quote on building it just in case.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll do that.
Who are you getting to, uh, take out trees and the stumps?
Jody has that basically handled for us, and a couple of loggers that may be interested in those.
Spring thaw, they can't go anywhere. They're sitting in the yards and highway seventy one's a ten ton road.
Well, they pulled the stumps also. Just take the trees. Give those are in for the stump, that'd be the way.
Those are back, oh, yeah, you're a plow.
Man, I'll get all those numbers for you guys, so you have them.
And then when you lay down cement pad for them, park their camper on?
Mm-hmm, just be class five and crush concrete. Just like the rest of the park. Keep it as natural as possible. Cause I wanna make sure that even around these, that I've got plenty of area to mow. So that it just, it just looks good. I wanna try and save some of the larger prop, uh, trees in between these sites. But I gotta get out there and figure out where these sites are, I have the road planned out, but I gotta get these sites planned out, now I can do that.
What's your timeline, Brian?
None, I don't have a timeline, it's just starting next year and we're gonna get it done. I haven't actually built a timeline, but I would like to have this done before the end of the year. But if we talk about constructing the road, it might, it can be sooner. If we, if we find a good, uh, space for it.
You wanna. You got the sewer going down the road, correct?
Yep.
So you're gonna wanna have the sewer done first, and the pipes put, so whoever's doing the sewer can strip your top soil for you and set that out to the side.
Will water go down the road too, and then?
Yeah, water.
Yeah, water and shore, and electric probably.
Well, I was figuring electric on the backside and then coming.
On the backside of each, each side of it?
Yeah, it's the red lines there.
Oh, I see. Oh, I see.
You know, it's basically how I have it planned out to be.
I see.
And then, I mean, the electrical can be your last thing to do.
Yeah.
But it should be your last thing to do.
Yeah, the electrical and the pedestals. And this is, this is also figured in with, uh, the water hydrants too, getting those in there for each site.
Yeah, to get all your underground done. Before you actually build the road too. For you to finish off the road.
Yeah, I mean, all this stuff, if we can get it all ran, none, none of the, the sewer and the water, any of the pipes coming out of the ground, I think doesn't have to be done. Right away, get the road done first, and then we can get all that stuff done.
Cause they, I mean. They, uh, they'll run their, the water and sewer line, they'll just, just like out of house, they'll just stub it out and then.
Yeah, well, our water hydrants will be like some of the ones we have out at the park, a lot of them, and then the electrical boxes, but I'm gonna try and keep it kind of the same. But I wanna put the water and sewer right next to each other too.
So when this is done, Brian, then these will be the only. Uh, primitive lots?
Mm-hmm. Those will be the primitives. Yep, and then right here, like Ron and I have talked about in the past, right where Site ten is here. Really steep right there and the road is a little narrow, so we got some trees we're gonna take out right through here and we're gonna fill in with fill. And bring that deep hole back up a little bit, all the while without trying to ruin the area for the water to run to. And that's a bad poison ivy area too. Just horrible. Believe I can kill it by putting a road there.
And get some more numbers.
Thank you.
Evening. Part of my report here, um. Update on behind the wheel training for Julian, he starts Monday, so that changed for CDLs. That they have to go through a whole class course. So it's a four day course and then they take their test, so they'll take it. M state. So they supply everything, so it's just the four day class.
Oh, semi tractor they provide?
Yeah.
What does it cost?
Forty-eight fifty.
Forty-eight fifty to get in a CDL?
Yeah, for the course. That's, that's changed, so that was a new, new part put in place in twenty-two. Used to be that you'd just be able to go with a licensed driver, but do the, do your behind the wheel and then go take a test.
I'm aware of that, but. When he was hired, did you, did you realize he didn't have a CDL?
Yeah. Yeah, that we discussed that beforehand and through it all.
Yeah, we only had one up that had a CDL.
We're adopting him to be able to drive wild trucks and whatever.
He's been coming along, he's been doing the learning, learning the different aspects of.
He was needing a physical too, he needs a mobile.
He did that. Well, actually, well, with the medical card, he's exempt, being for the city.
Really?
Yeah.
Again, what?
He's exempt from doing the, the medical card.
Is there drug testing?
Drug tests happen, so he's on that um, what do they do, the water, he's on that lottery thing.
Yeah, he's in with Ascension.
Yeah. Well, Sanford. Yeah, that was Sanford, MDL that he, or. But me, gee, he went to Sanford there. He sent it, it sent it, he sent the opposite, but this was through there since it was through um DOT. So you can get through M state to provide that the drug tests since you signed up for the class.
Yeah, but now, we do ours in Park Rapids, which is only fifteen minutes away, you're gonna pay a guy to drive sixty miles?
That was, that was that beginning aspect. Yeah, we'll be able to get on the lottery for that. And then uh Pierwood Stern sideways for the winter, it's been turned, so. Christmas leaves are to be put up on December first, Monday. Then uh I did get a hold of, talked to the water, when the water survey guy came for the water plant and their inspection. He also discussed the fluoride with me, so there's a different lady to get a hold of. And Minnesota right now is working on conditions through different cities to try and get. Um. The Congress or the representatives to, to allow cities to stop feeding fluoride if we put conditions. So it's different, different deals to go through them. I'm gonna get more information from this other lady that he gave me the phone number to come, to get a hold of. And then keep on figuring out this whole fluoride aspect.
Uh I do know last year that it was a legislative topic at the state, but it never made it to an agenda, so it was never discussed.
So there is more push, the only, the only state so far has been Iowa that has allowed no fluoride.
We have a pretty good amount of natural fluoride.
We have enough natural that we can stop feeding, if they would allow us to say, go down to the natural limit. Cause natural limit, they says above point two zero, ours that's up being a point two or. Point two four to two eight, somewhere in that range.
And what limit does the state mandate fluoride has to be at?
Point five right now. So we've been staying at that limit as low, we've been at a point five five to a point six five, we've been in that range. With our fluoride right now, and you can tell the difference, I mean. More, more aspect for me, I can tell the difference when the fluoride's been lower.
I can too, my shallow well at home is piped into my kitchen and I got both city water and. Natural well water and nursing efforts in the days.
Then I do have that MinDOT roundabout, kinda talking about that aspect. And that does want, would like a motion from city to move forward. Um with putting their own about in.
Now, they're gonna be smart enough to put that in when they redo seventy-one, correct?
That is this, yeah.
Not there up first, I'm then.
So that's why this.
They take it, that's supposed to be seventy-one and eighty-seven.
That's, yeah. The holiday would be where that one building is down over here. But it won't, they're saying it shouldn't with that other side, take away the parking that we already have. In front of that cafe and the insurance, so there should still be the three parking spots. Cause the way that the curb is painted now.
Seventy feet.
It shouldn't go past, that should be still parking starting area.
Well, how much wider do they intend on making a street?
They're not, they're actually gonna get a little bit narrower with the sidewalks and the curbs are gonna come in a little bit.
Sidewalks are gonna be turned to six foot. Instead, I think there, some of our might end up being four or five.
And then the curbs are coming in a foot and a half on each side. So you get a, a slope to the.
And that'll slow traffic.
Do we need a motion for that?
Yes.
I'll move, I'll move that with, re- uh accept the MinDOT recommendation.
I'll second it.
Any more discussion? All in favor of that? Post same sound. They can move forward.
Now, they asked for a letter of formal consent for the cost sharing of. The street parking and also that sign down on the end, the crosswalk sign. That's gonna be installed by Subway, gonna be that push button. They call them, um, they have a certain name.
It's got the flashing lights that come on.
Yeah, yeah. So they, they would like a letter signed stating. Once they, once they have numbers in front of me right now, we don't.
They just wanna, because uh of the parking aspect. For, for them, the default is no parking on the side, just wider lanes.
Yeah.
We're saying we want parking on the sides, MinDOT's like, okay, if we're gonna do that, you're gonna have to contribute.
We're contributing, we're, they're not adding anything.
No.
So there shouldn't be any cost involved in keeping the parking.
When it was done before, that's what city, city paid for that also. That's when that project was done.
For the paving or?
Yeah.
State road, Highway seventy-one?
Yeah, cuz they wanna take the parking away.
We are to agree with. So what I'm signing on for.
Well, uh on a positive note, uh if, if they, if it comes back and it's completely ridiculous, we can just say no. And they will just still do all the work, they just won't include the parking.
We got the parking on those streets.
Yeah.
The agreement has an escape clause in it?
Well, for them, of course it does.
Well, for us.
I mean.
You said if we sign onto it, we don't like the cost, we just say no.
Well, yeah, but, but the alternative is though that they, they're knocking up the park. So one way or the other, we, we have to say yes.
But if we say yes and sign on, we, we're incurring liability for a cost. I wanna know at least a ballpark figure, what is that cost?
Probably get a no until they start putting out bids.
I mean, for that roundabout, the price he gave the county was around two.
Uh yeah, no, they, they. No, that's the county and the state, the, the county's gonna pay for a quarter of that.
So if you're actually looking at.
For a quarter of the roundabout?
Streetwise, each block maybe ten thousand. How many blocks do you got each area?
What's all the way from Subway all the way?
Three, at least three blocks for sure.
Subway to First Street Door to Liquor.
Probably rolling around a hundred. Hundred thousand.
Are you trying to go in north of the roundabout too, huh?
Yeah.
Maybe, yeah, from what Subway all the way to, to the liquor store corner, yeah.
So you probably look at that, at that, at that ballpark of a hundred thousand area.
About eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven, yeah, they'll be parking on along eighty-seven.
MinDOT couldn't give you any idea of the cost though?
No, no.
Have they been asked? Or a ballpark estimate, have they even been asked?
I, I mean, I know, I know we discussed it, right, but uh.
But did you ask if they could give us a ballpark number?
I can't, I can't recall.
I'd, I'd like to find out if we can get at least a ballpark estimate before I sign.
When do we need it, when do they need it all, by?
They, I know they wanted the water consent before they're gonna. Do anything aspect, otherwise.
Yeah, cuz they just wanna incorporate it into their plan.
Yeah, that's for twenty twenty-eight, so does my guess.
Yeah, I think this column opens to see, you've done a lot of these projects, you've put a lot of these crosswalks in, what does it cost to put a crosswalk in with those beacons on it?
Get ahold of Kelly and then bring this back to the uh eight meeting.
Well, and then we gotta consider, it's not just seventy-one, it'll be on eighty-seven too.
Yes.
We have parking all along eighty-seven, all the way down to what, fur? That's all the way to fur.
Cause you got that in front of that church and then it stops parking there and starts.
Oh, yeah, but it's only the north side of the street that is no parking from. Is it birch all the way to fur? It's only cell site parking on.
Yeah. And um we are gonna have Chris here, moving on to the other aspect, but uh it's not making it tonight, we did get the PFA funding for the water. So moving on with the project, um will be next regular council meeting. Then you'll have more of the packets, more of the discussion to go there, and then after that is the public hearing or was the, the public hearing?
No, 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 no. Chris's, the, the original intent was to have him here tonight, just to give the council the news. So- socialize it with the council and let them know uh anything that needs to come up and, and really the, the, the. So the summary is, um he wants to move aggressively on this, so look for a public hearing sometime late January, so maybe at that January work session. Uh, what was it?
It'll be at the Plannings on, right?
Yeah, yes, uh for the public hearing, uh so probably the beginning of February and then go right out to bids. Uh and have this really done by fall next year.
And that's, that's the uh Long Beach.
Beach, Second Street all the way across here and.
Okay.
Down in Balsam and. Two streets, there's a senior and.
Don't have to get our financing base though first before we settle, let bids.
We'll have to, we gotta get the bids out so we know how much to borrow, we have to borrow. Once we know what the number is, then we have to.
Well, we. Jody, we'd be able to do the step date when they have eighty-seven open, wouldn't we? While they're doing the, the eighty-seven construction and that's four up, wouldn't that be the time to do the septic?
Seventy-one.
Seventy-one and eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven, they're not tearing completely up, there's milling over there on that.
There's what?
Just milling over there.
Oh.
Seventy-one is when we're doing the sewer.
Yeah, as long as it's four up anyway, that's time.
Otherwise, it'll be another. Who knows how long before MinDOT would, well.
Yeah, that's, that's part of that project, is the sewer across.
Cause eighty-seven, the water is actually in a ditch there, so we don't have to do nothing in the road itself, it's just laying place.
So they'll be able to easily repay for your placeholds line. They're gonna dig down eight or, eight or ten feet to drop that water in. Should be to the, you know.
No, in that area, they, just like Chris said, whether it's gonna be. Having to put a wall up if anything, otherwise it should just be able to put it right next to the other pipe and. Have, have them the new lines.
Hold is that old pipe line, seven?
That was the. Or it's probably fifty, sixty.
That's old lead pipe?
Yeah. Yeah, that's the cast iron, just as, the same age as the one that runs along the.
Did you quit flushing that line?
Yeah, the auto flusher got taken off cuz it ends up being.
Getting a lot of debris and the ultimate system coming in now again.
Yeah, once we start that up in January again with the freeze run. But right now, during the timeframe that it's freezing, we don't wanna have that auto flush around there.
So when you pour that, you can pour it in the coals. But anyway.
Yeah, no, that's, that's plans, so it'd be the spring of, spring of two thousand twenty-six is what they're looking, so.
Streets need it, streets are rough here.
The only thing was on there was the sewer didn't go through. So that would, it would be, well, MRWA actually has loans that city can apply for too, and then our one percent loans. So if it comes down to having to apply for a sewer loan. The city has that aspect to deal with.
That's in the last twenty years or, or the news or?
Can't remember how long that one is, I think it's a twenty.
This project is both sewer and water up.
Yeah, he had it, he had the plans of what the cost was gonna be.
Just for the water.
Just for the water.
So we have to pay for the sewer.
For the sewer.
Do we have an idea what the cost of, of replacing the sewer will be to the city?
He did have a breakdown.
Yeah, yeah, breakdown, he'll have it at the next meeting.
Yeah, he'll have it all.
We, we've seen it once, you know, approximate on the whole project, but that's been a while.
Yeah.
And then it's.
Whether how much their costs have changed, it's been what, two years, I think, since we had the first one, so.
So he'll have some updates on that.
He'll, he'll be there on the eighth?
Yes.
Yeah, don't hold on to that.
Yep.
All right, anybody got anything else around?
Just a quick question, with snow removal, did we uh. As far as I clean the sidewalks and charge them back, people that don't clean their sidewalks, did we collect any money last year from that?
We did.
How much did you collect?
I'll have to, I can get that number to you, I couldn't say. It was about three, three snowfalls and I think on that list was. And so. Three times, so thirty times twenty.
Six hundred.
I noticed the sidewalk on the street side of Chuck's grocery store never gets shovelled. Ever, those sidewalks are never ever gets.
That, that's pretty, that's a tough one, getting through there with the skidster too to try, because they got that pylon or that. Oh, uh wire holding it there. You can't even fit anything in between that retaining wall and the pylon.
What's the policy on uneven sidewalks, where the sidewalks moving and you got trip hazards?
That ends up being the homeowner's expense, or if the city has a contractor come out and. That ends up being the homeowner's expense, or if the city has a contractor come out and do it, then we bill, bill, then not bill.
There's a really nasty one as you're walking, terrible, eighty-seven. It's kinda right across me, you know, for shillings live there, but it's on a north side of the road. There's, there's a lift of maybe two and a half inches there.
That one where that tree ends right next to it?
Yeah.
Better we go grind it down.
So. So they don't ask for a sidewalk, we put in a sidewalk. They pay to, if they don't shovel it and they pay if the sidewalk gets messed up, they gotta pay to fix it.
Yeah.
So if they don't want the sidewalk, can they just turn the sidewalk down?
No, because it has to be replaced with what's, what was there.
Kinda weird.
Cuz that's, that's a no, that's a no ordinance.
But if they wanna get the sledge out, knock out the old sidewalk and get their paint or their cement mix or tumbling, they can pour their old sidewalk in.
Right, it's nothing in the ordinance, same, it just has to be replaced with what's, what was there.
Don't look at me, I, you guys made the ordinance. You guys voted on it.
As far as the other one last quick question, if you get a heavy snowfall, let's say you get a blow over fourteen inch dump, you guys have the capacity to move all that snow on it quickly or?
Yeah, we do. That's why we've been at times that we're, if we know for sure that we're gonna have that, we'll try go halfway in between, get that first initial part off. If we get that much snow and it's that sticky crap, it's tough pushing it with the plow. We don't have the grader like we did before to be able to push that slushy, that slushy crap off.
Snowball won't do it?
They, they slide. When you get all that piled up, then everything starts spinning.
Well, you only pick and cut them two or three feet at a time to keep.
Yeah, it's, it's.
A lot of snow.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that's right.
Okay, that's all. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, so short date span from number six to the nineteen, uh, we had seventy-one calls. Anybody have any questions on those call? Um, state citations, we issued one for theft, our administrative citations, we did two for speed, uh, two were stop sign. And then our long form complaints, we did a first degree damage to property.
What is that? First degree?
It's a felony. It's the worst one we can be sharp with. Space stop dollar amount.
Or how much damage was that?
And then you can see the mileage on our squad cars. And the miscellaneous information, our lovely transmission went out again. Thank goodness it's covered under warranty, so there will be.
But that isn't that long enough.
Yeah, I'm, I'm very thankful it's covered under warranty. Apparently, I had asked about this, um, there's certain two thousand sixteen Ford Explorers that have transmission issues for whatever reason. So.
Yeah, eleven, the second one too.
Yeah, so I'm really hoping that it will be, it's already in as indicated on here, and then I think it goes to next Wednesday. It's like a two day job to get it put in.
You're down there.
Yeah.
We done with two squads?
What's that?
Are we down to two squad cars?
No, it is still running. It's still, we're gonna.
Limping it a lot.
We're gonna run it until it goes out. So, and I made sure that it's still covered under warranty. It is because last time, um, we were not able to do that because what with the core? If we were in the core, then we wouldn't get that exchange. So this one is good to go until it's just maybe.
The replacement transmission has been ordered for us?
It's here already.
Fourth year?
Yep, it got here. Okay, cuz that's where we ordered it from. Yeah, it's here. It'll go on Wednesday to get replaced. And then hopefully that's it for transmission issues. I.
How long will it be on? Did they say to do?
Two days. Yep.
But if this one goes out, we'll be getting aftermarket instead of a factory.
I don't know. I, I feel like everybody you talk to about vehicle issues, anything going on, it's, they're just saying everything is made junk these days. I don't know. Either that or we just.
When do you anticipate replacing your vehicle?
Well, we're kind of in a pickle with that now because, um, mine has been about the only reliable one, so it's gonna be hard to let that one go, even though it's probably gonna rust apart before it falls apart. And we didn't get the full amount of funding that was requested from Sourcewell, so we're only gonna have about roughly thirty-seven dollars or thirty-seven thousand dollars to, to try to get something. I definitely don't wanna get something old like we did last time that is, you know, ten years old. We don't have warranties. The problem is, is if we don't stick with something that we can transfer equipment over, we're probably gonna be looking at eight thousand dollars worth of equipment to transfer over into a new squad. On top of that, it's.
The cost to transfer is eight thousand?
No, 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 that's about, that's between four and five thousand to tear down a squad, rebuild a squad. To get equipment that's gonna fit in our replacement squad is probably between eight and ten thousand.
So you're thinking twenty-seven then instead of twenty-six for third question?
I don't even, I, I, I don't know at this point in time. I I think our options are gonna be extremely limited with the small amount of money that we have.
How much is in your capital, like budget for twenty-six?
That's the number. Oh, we.
So there's ten thousand that, that's in there now, fifteen thousand was set aside for twenty twenty-six, and then we got just under thirteen thousand from Sourcewell.
Twenty-seven, if we set aside the same amount, glad you're all right.
But we have to have the Sourcewell money in the year, so we have to get something by November. So I had, I was talking to Naomi and Wadina. They actually purchased theirs on a payment plan. And kinda tossing her on that idea, they pay what did she say, ten thousand? I had, I have it on my computer, but they pay like ten thousand a year towards their payments. So if we have to burn up the Sourcewell money, I think there might be a way that we could figure that out, put that as a down payment. Have enough money, but then it still has to be a budgeted line item as far as payments. I don't know. I honestly don't know what we're gonna do because the cost of everything keeps going up. So I'll just drive mine. Yep, we have to spend that by November.
Would it be your vehicle that you'd look at replacing?
Well, that's originally what we planned, but now I'm like with Derek's, so Derek's, mine's a two thousand eighteen, his is a two thousand sixteen. And honestly, if his continues to be a problem like that, I'm like, eh, I don't know. I don't know if we'd wanna kick that one out of the fleet and keep mine. Never had an issue with mine, knock on wood, but it is getting up there in miles, but I don't know. I'll have to do some shopping around.
We'll figure it out.
Yeah.
Yeah, we just have to be creative. We'll get it figured out.
Well, and Enbridge was very gracious when it came to giving, you know, uh, money towards our computers. My pickle is though is like our tasers are super outdated. Those finally got paid off last year. They don't even make them anymore. They won't repair them anymore. So now I'm like, huh, wants needs, wants needs, what do we need more?
What's the cost for replacing these?
So we just got them and they were eleven thousand, I think, for, yeah, they're in, for three of them, I think.
Are they magjatses if you?
No, that's.
Let them buy them.
Yeah.
The ones that we set up when we got these ones was a, it was a five-year contract.
Yeah, and, and then they finally got paid off. And here it's like they're out, super outdated. They work fine, and that's honestly, they work fine. If one breaks, we're just not gonna be able to get it repaired. It is what it is. I think the squad's more important than these right now, so I might reach out to Enbridge and see if.
You can reload a taser, right?
Yeah.
It just if it breaks, they're not fixing it. You can still buy the batteries. You can get all the cartridges for it. They're reusable.
We'll see. We have time and that's kinda, it's like, I don't wanna, the sky is falling because we have several months to get this figured out. Just have to have a, uh, something in plan and the Sourcewell money spent by, um, November. So.
I'm sure you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thanks. Sure. I'm good. I can haul it.
Yep, you should come. Oh, that's. Well, are you done pouring mud yet? That's the first question.
Pardon me?
Are you done pouring mud yet?
I hope today was the last one.
Well. Last, yeah, it's been the last part for the. Um. We have been busy at the department. I know that the exact calls, I think they had seven or eight in the last month. Um, I think about forty some for the year. Did have a couple of structural fires within the last month. And, um, with that being said, um, we've got one part I would like to address with several things, but, um, we're in dire need of a smoke extraction fan.
A what?
Smoke extract and ventilation fans. Um, the one that was our mainstay, that was, um, it's a gas operated one, it's probably twenty-seven years old. It was here, it's been here for a long time. And then our secondary fan is a, a battery operated one. That's kinda what everybody's going to know, though. It's a so nice, you know, to start, but, uh, the motherboard, I believe, is totally out on that one. That's more to repair it than to replace it, but they're not cheap. Um, the fans are, um, forty-three hundred dollars apiece. This, and that's, uh, one of the least expensive ones. Um, we have a demo in our hall right now. Um, Grand Forks fire brought it down for us when he was showing us some turnout gear, which we're also working on, but, um, sticking to the fan, he had two of them there. One was, uh, sixty-eight hundred dollars and the center one is like forty-three hundred dollars. Um. I would, I, I would like to, I would like to buy two of them and, and replace the ones that we don't work or may start, may not start. And that would be, uh, we had a, Jim got a quote on two of them would be eighty-six hundred dollars, which includes three batteries for fan and the chargers. The fast chargers, and those are Milwaukee compatible batteries, so they do interchange with our other tools that we're slowly turning to, like the cordless saws and stuff like that. So, I mean, it would be smart just to stay in that part of it. These are something you set in the doorway. Yes, in the doorway or you can move it like, like we had a, you know, we had a, uh, fire here just on the west side of town here a few months ago and we tried to get the fan upstairs cuz, uh, the, the lower section of the house was nice, but upstairs and, and, uh, we tried to take our portable one up there and it, it just, it, it, it's just wouldn't work. And th- these are small enough. They're eighteen inch fans, ten thousand seven hundred and eighty CFM, so cuz we did, we were thinking, oh, this is ridiculous.
Air is moving.
So we, we, we looked at what Milwaukee's, you know, like for the construction fans and stuff, but they're only about thirty-four hundred CM, and that's the highest one we could find out of Milwaukee. You know, that would be compatible with our batteries and so.
What are these fans made by?
Uh, Tempest. It's a Tempest. Yes. And, um, they are significantly, almost three times more powerful than, and they do move a lot of air. So I know we got some change in the equipment fund and, and, uh, I, I would like to be able to move forward and, and replace what we have and if we are allowed to get that, I'd like to be able to maybe sell ours, you know, at least advertise it and get rid of our old one. Uh, like I said, that one is just a plug-in fan. It's been around since, I don't know, before my time, to be honest with you. And the other one is a gas fan that's very unreliable. It's big, cumbersome to move around.
The, okay, but the plug-in, the electric fan that was.
That little.
Yeah, that was a bad one though.
Yeah. No, that was the one that was originally number nine.
Yeah, that was the one that we're having to constantly jiggle the switch to.
No, that's the battery, battery company. There's two of them.
Yeah.
That's the one we have to do. That's the one with the motherboard.
Yeah.
That's pretty much.
Yeah.
Basically, you have money in your equipment fund.
We do.
So it won't, it won't affect the budget.
Yeah, you see, that'd be the kind of, of item, just curious question, cuz I don't know. Would that be the kind of item that a large fire department would just be rotating over as part of their natural?
I'm sure they'd have a five year.
You'd probably get them for us.
Well, I, that's a good question. I know we're not looking to use ones, I guess. I, I don't know if they, they turn them or not. I mean.
You don't see them for sale.
He, he does more shopping than I do on the, on the marketplaces and stuff than that. He does. And I, I'm on fire sites too, on the websites, used equipment.
Sounds like it's more of a need than a want if these other two aren't functioning as they should.
This is a need because, I mean, ventilation is a very important factor in fighting fire. I mean, and, uh, we don't likely even, uh, even if we have a smoke alarm, you know, per se, and, and so say it's a burning, something on the stove, we'll ventilate that residence until it's cleared in fresh air before we leave. I mean, that's just part of our task. So, and, I, and I, I, these prices are really good compared to what's out there. I mean, I mean, because it you know, they're anywhere from sixty-eight thousand dollars and, and he has this, he had this one, uh, demo one, which we have in the hall now. He left it with us just so we could use it. And so we got on the horn with him and see if we couldn't get two of them at that demo price. It took some talking and, and Jim did some more talking to him after I talked to him and, and he did come down and he, he matched two demo prices and one would be a brand new. And I don't think the one's been demoed. I mean, I don't think it's got an albatross on it, to be honest with you. Guys, it looks brand new. Well, what you need for that is consensus in, in your budget.
Right, right.
As long as we have consensus, that should go.
Well, I would, I would, I would invite you to, to come to the VFW meeting on the ninth also to present this.
Yeah.
And, uh, see what the VFW can donate towards the purchase.
You see the consensus, you don't need a motion?
We should. It's in, it's in this equipment budget already.
Yeah, I would be in favor of it.
Okay. Keith, you in favor?
Yeah, I'm gonna try to stay, stay from it just because I'm an apartment, so.
Might you for it? Bill, you here? You still with it? Bill?
Down here, yep.
You're near it? Yep, you in favor of the fans for the fire department?
Yeah.
Yeah. You got your consensus. And as long as we're talking money, um, we, we did, uh, receive our Sourcewell grant of fifty thousand towards our new compressor system. And, uh, which was actually higher than what we anticipated. We were anticipating forty, I believe, and we actually got fifty, which was a plus. And so we took it and, and got a current quote. This is, I mean, I believe it was just last week, wasn't it, Jim? It's, it's a very current quote on that compressor system, one that we were.
That's the most often made, the last, yeah.
Small stuff, yeah, and, and everything.
Yeah, the one I gave you, that's, yeah.
Everything on the, that's set up in our halls comes to sixty-two thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars. So it's initially under budget. We were kind of estimating around seventy thousand five, so we're actually a little bit lower than that. We got an increase under grant, which is very good. And, um, so I guess we'd like to move forward and, and probably get that ordered. You know?
I, I think, I mean, the council was already fully supporting this. I mean, we have the funding, uh, I think.
Yep.
Please proceed.
Yes, I'm just open on discussion. And then one other aspect now, the sales rep on that says that we may be able to get some money for all the, all the compressors. I mean, uh.
So I would like to cover the pooch.
It, it might be awesome.
If we can do it.
Have the okay to make a.
Well, we, we need to do this by resolution. So along with those fans, I, I just need make model serial number. If you guys can email me those things, I'll have them on a resolution, uh, and then, uh, we can make them go away.
So that might not feel good for us. I'm not holding this up. We need some cash on that.
We'll have to have assembly list?
Yeah.
Okay.
We should know, we will do some cash on it. And, um, and then, uh, talking to Brad, we're looking at our fees that I don't even have a copy of that. I love that, and I took my own. And these are my suggestions. I don't, I don't think these fees have been raised or, or changed for several, several years, guys, and obviously, it's not a way to make money, but it's a way to cover our expenses and, and, uh, the mobilization, you know, at five hundred dollars, our neighboring towns are anywhere between five to a thousand. Park Rapids is going to a thousand this year. So Viga's at six hundred. I believe Wolf Lake is still at five hundred. They're talking about going up. They kind of, Wolf Lake kind of follows suit with us. I mean, to be honest with you. And, and seven-fifties are all this apartment out the door, you probably are to cover expenses away. And if you start looking at insurance and, and, you know, everything all the way down the line. And they, for some reason, they always reduce the fees after the first hour, but, I mean, our expenses are not going down, so they're probably able to increase, to be honest with you, because you're, you're more in depth, you're more into more equipment. You're doing more stuff if you're there longer term. So I, I see no reason why we're dropping our, our our fees after the first hour. I mean, it should be flat. I mean, it makes no sense to, to reduce the price when your expenses aren't going down.
So, um, when the insurance company makes good on, on the claim, this is all something they would, the insurance company would pay.
Absolutely.
So the burden isn't so much on the, the person, it's more.
It's insurance company.
So like when, when, well, when I do the report in the bill, ma- majority of the time, so we'll take this number, this number, add it together, then send it to the homeowner and then they turn around and add it to their, or give it to their insurance companies. Insurance companies, but we don't like, we don't break it down from. It's usually just these two numbers, the five hundred and then the three hundred. Right now. We don't go through individual and add that. So that's why we, if. We go to the just the standard seven fifty across the board for every hour, it would cover. Pretty much everything then.
Cover all these expenses too. Public just kind of standard on the policy.
Cause our averages is probably on a, you know, even on a major stretch of fire where there are three, four.
Yeah, but like a lot of these ones are for like the DNR, it's lots of them, so they request just a water attendant.
But if you call. Park Rapids. The homeowner would be paying their.
We don't hear the charge from them though.
Or don't they don't? Seating. Can you find that off for me? I don't know if that's ever been calculated, but we need to know.
Right now, we're stuck in it, those prices.
Alright, so. Let's put this. These changes, if everybody's not agreeing on it, let's put these changes on it to be signed off on and they also.
Uh, this will be uh first. I need a lot of the discussion to put forward, so. Yeah, I I guess if they come up here. Just saying, we'll put those numbers for that to the the first thing you want to be. Or fee scale again.
And and this, I just wanted to just quickly talk like on a couple of notes quickly, you know, um. They they have included one person, one person, but we realistically, we we won't send out. One of these units with one person. That's why some of these got the increase. It's just the increase for that second person. Because you can't feasibly send a strategy out with one person, you know. Cause one's gonna be driving, one's gonna be running the hose and that's just the way it up. So that's the way we practice. I mean, that's the way we train on it. And then that that works in 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 sight with the ATVs and the UTVs also, you know. And uh, I know uh unlike on the forty eight fifty five, I don't think it was even taken into consideration that you got far personnel going on. It's just basically with the truck number there. So that's why I I looked at these and I said, hey, you know, we gotta make some adjustments. Cover the personnel too, so. We discussed later, that that's what's my reason behind. A lot of the adjustments on it. So that's what.
Yes, we do.
For the fans. Is that an action?
Make that motion. Well, second then.
All favors say aye.
It'd be seven o'clock.
No, I'm the. Just just so there there's that way there's no issues. Because I'm on the department and I don't want it to. Come up with any issues, so. Yeah.
Those uh don't uh, we we are adding one. New fellow there, I believe. He had an applicant, uh. Young man, local guy, um, his brother's on the department. Um, so. Just as a department, we're not running at twenty two right now. But um, we've been trying to, you know, gain some more members on the department, but let's get back to on that twenty five.
Well, we've got a few that don't hardly ever show up.
Yeah, they're getting addressed. Yeah, yeah, and and uh so, yeah, and um. But uh, we'll probably vote them on to probation this next meeting coming up.
Uh, please send me your name so I can bring them to the council.
He did, he did all the city paper with his, he got all that stuff and got all that stuff and stuff, so. And uh, other than that, Jimmy, you have anything I I'm missing? Does he have any questions or anything?
Like, oh, yeah, I do. When they do this road out here, are we gonna look at doing our part a lot? That's getting all broke up under the tangy.
Yeah.
Where?
That's gonna be looked into. I I brought that up too, Chris, our engineer.
Thank you.
That area and also this area with a storm, storm pipe running down. So we don't get no call ups anymore.
And the weather stuff, where do you want?
That one I agree on, but that's the set. That would be better off just going through, we're trying to do alleyways. Gonna get a price, price from this thing. Alright, thanks, everyone. I I'm gonna move you to number one next time, alright?
Oh, no, this is fine. I learned so much tonight.
Good.
So I already had your report at the meeting.
Yeah.
So.
If you have any questions on. Not yet. No, we haven't had the best of luck, think rather than as much luck as they're having down the road. Um, I did have an interview tonight. I have two more tomorrow, um, and then I have to reschedule when she was safe. So we'll probably do that next week, fingers crossed. Yeah, so. So, yeah.
Your cave's going good?
Yeah, did you give them that thing? That I gave you to give them?
Oh, yeah, Kelly had told me those stuff up.
Please expand it.
Okay, so I had Kelly go through and look at everything to uh. So you told me he kind of wanted a total. So the total of the roof project was uh four thou- or forty five thousand eight hundred eighty two dollars and thirteen cents. And the total of the beer cave. Was uh seventy one thousand eight hundred and thirty nine dollars and ninety nine cents. Uh, eight eighty two and thirteen cents.
So even with our little hiccup on that roof scupper, we still remain a little bit on the budget of the beer cave.
Oh, yeah, I've been in there. It's pretty cool. It's it was a good invention, I think. And it gives you a lot more room now to just.
Um, yeah, I just didn't realize how people would wander now. And sometimes forget they're in there. I need to come up with a bell or something for when they come out.
Is that in your door? When you go in?
I'm talking about.
Sorry, we got given. And I have not got a hold of Dan yet about that door.
Yeah, I I need to email him anyway because he has not. Offered me a a day yet for the. Services, yeah, so. Right, yeah, hopefully. So, but I mean. Still making money, lots of projects, but we still have a little bit of money.
Okay, what's going up at all? What is it?
Um, well, then I I kind of. Waited till we had the beer cave done and uh the bar is fine. A couple of things went up, not a whole lot and same with. The booze on the shelf, a few things. Not really a whole lot has changed. Um, and the ones that have changed is. Simply because it switched. Territories with our. Senders, yeah.
Are you? During the same month as the VFW or do you guys even compare?
I I don't really compare, I guess. I kind of try to keep. The beer on the bar side between a. That indeed is seventy five girls profit margin and then the liquor. So.
Have you seen anything from the state on the THC?
I have not. I have not. I I did tell Brad I did get a phone call from the enterprise, um, but we haven't heard anything, but. Both Kelly and I looked into it and even if anything does pass. They're not gonna, and nothing is going into effect until November of next year, so I'm just doing what we're doing right now and. I guess if things go south, I have a blowout sale. I don't know.
It's gonna be good instruction from the state.
Well, you'd even think your venue lets supplies you that product.
They, yeah, we'd get a heads up way before we had to worry about anything.
Stuff will get real spending when they outlaw.
I mean, it's already out. Minnesota's just not. Playing along with. That will go.
You guys have any other questions for him?
You've got some good work.
We look at the interview, hopefully something works out.
Yeah.
What do you have planned for the Christmas holidays?
Uh, well, we are open until four on. Christmas Eve and then we are closed Christmas Day. We kind of have to, like. Minnesota's for municipals, that's kinda.
But what what activities have you got fun on? Are you doing eggnog one day or? Hot potties another day or anything planned or? Business as usual.
Business as usual. We tried to do Tom and Jerry's a couple of times, but we couldn't find anyone who. Supplied the stuff, but I do have some uh. Eggnoggy alcohol that I'll I'll probably put on sale for Christmas Day. There's like a Fireball eggnog and a. Southern Comfort eggnog and a Christian Brothers Friday and eggnog, so. We'll probably. See if those can get moved in the wire a little bit, but.
Alright, we gotta kind of keep it moving because we got a lawyer that has a time frame for this. Close session, so.
Uh, administrative report, um. I have uh the bank's. Pledge in front of you, uh, that has uh pledged for uh. Valley just over eight million.
That's really not a scam.
And Greenwood County, yes. Moving into uh informational, uh, if the council wants to, because the, I think the city's been doing a lot of really good things. If the council wants me to highlight something during truth and taxation to say like, hey, here's what we're doing with. While in stewardship of your money, this is what we're doing with it and this is why it's great. Uh, like one of the things I'd like to highlight is the liquor store expansion. And then I'd also like to highlight uh. The uh camp campground uh expansion as well as the disc disc golf. Uh, the additional eight holes that's getting ready to be put in.
And the campground expansion hasn't been done yet.
Hasn't been done. It's in the works though and it it's kind of going along with what the council decided last year, which is kind of re. Yeah, which is reinvest back into our equities to make the city, one, look better and generate more revenue. That uh will help keep our taxes low, so.
And highlighting that we had swimming instructors and lifeguards is another item.
Okay, uh, we'll add that in.
That that I think we're, there are a lot of people, it's gonna be huge.
Uh, we are exploring a new printer service. Uh, we currently pay uh three hundred and eighty dollars a month to retain the service that we have right now. We've had some issues with it. Uh, I, the reason why I don't have documents in front of the council right now is because. We're do, still doing our research. Uh, we have, we have two bids, both of which are are cheaper. Uh, than three hundred and eighty dollars a month, which is great. Uh, the the two firms, uh, we're are essentially gonna buy out the contract. That we have left. And then uh immediately start providing a service, um, and it's going to be equal to or better than what we currently have. Uh, and you know, some of the reasons that. We've been pushed to this is because uh. From the time we have an issue to the time it gets. Fixed or addressed is rather significant. Uh, we had that one mishap with cards. Where uh. Toner is just coming off, so we're trying to send out bills, which is what I consider a no fail task for the city. And that's wrong and it's bad and that we, that can't happen, cannot happen.
When I did it a second time, yeah.
Yes. Yes, um, and when we call these individuals and say, hey, we have a problem. We need it fixed right now. We cannot next week. I I don't want you to call me back in in three hours or. We just, so we're looking for a little bit better customer service. And I think we narrowed it down to uh two companies. Um, League of Minnesota Cities has uh, you know, forums for my peers. Uh, and Kelly's peers were, so we're reaching out those forum, uh, and and that forum as well to see.
Of that service, you mean?
Yeah, to say like, hey.
To users and get actual, what's your experience?
Correct.
And find out how they, how well they handle problems.
Correct. So.
And well, uh, did you say that the new firm will pay the buyout on the old contract?
That's right.
So it won't cost us anything to get out of that.
It's not gonna cost us anything and then we'll end up paying a uh cheaper monthly. So that's gonna be the benefit.
Quality printer, is it a faster printer than what you currently have?
I wouldn't say it's any faster or slower, but it's gonna be a a higher quality for sure. How long a contract we have with the current? Or a company that we have? Uh, I think we have. How many years left on it? I I think seven months left. Oh, so less than, okay.
And how long is the contract with the new vendor?
Uh, this will be five years. So obviously, we're doing our due diligence. I just wanted to bring it to the council just.
Will they replace the printer inside of that five years or are you stuck with the same printer for five years? Cause. P printers can get worn out.
Yeah. At the rate we print, yes, um. I don't have an answer for you, but.
Ask the question?
I asked a million questions. I I can't say that.
More information at the next meeting.
Yes.
We we really need to move this along.
One question, I want to see if you can get an answer to that. They'll replace the printer during the contract.
Yes, if, yes. Uh, next, uh, we have the actual Minnesota paid leave policy. This is from our attorneys. Customized to the city of Monaga.
That was all state mandate.
It it does uh cover the state mandate.
This is on the new one starting on January first.
Correct, yes. And uh again, I wanted it as a standalone policy, so. When change has come out, which uh they're inevitably going to, but we can just simply modify this document as needs be.
Right, being against the state mandate, we don't really have any choice on it. We'll check the motion until approved.
So moved.
Second.
It's about.
So this policy has to be implemented by every employer in the state of Minnesota?
That's right.
We're working on it, but I'm just gonna share this with.
Yeah, uh, the water disconnect policy has been updated, uh. And this is myself and Diane taking a look at it. Uh, we did have uh really, so the the main difference that you're looking at here is in bullet three. Uh, on the current policy, if the entire payment is not received by the last day of the third month. Uh, we changed that to if the entire payment is not received by the tenth day of the third month. Because that's when uh the billing lines up and it's. Much more efficient for us to send it all out at once versus waiting another twenty days. And they're already delinquent by this time, so we're. We're. Saving ourselves time and money for this. Second, thank you. Uh, next, we have a resolution. Uh, this is designating. Uh, City Hall as the polling place for twenty twenty six. This is resolution twenty twenty five thirty six, a resolution of the City Council of City of Monaga, Minnesota. Monaga City Council specifying twenty twenty six polling place. Whereas the city of Monaga is required by state statute two oh four B dot one six subdivision one. Does designate a polling place for the following year's election. Now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Monaga. That the polling place for twenty twenty six will be Monaga City Hall located at one one five Second Street Northeast, Monaga, Minnesota. Adopted by the City Council of the City of Monaga this day, the twenty fourth day of November, twenty twenty five.
All favors say aye. Bills. Oh, seventy thousand five hundred and one dollars and seventy one cents.
Shield approval for.
Second.
Okay, now we'll be on to the close session. Labor negotiations feedback report to the council will meet in close session presented to Minnesota statute fifteen D point zero three subdivision one D. Discuss labor negotiation strategies related to the LLL house and compare strategy for team strength. Discuss labor negotiations, strategies, we're going to the L L House and compare strategy for team streets. It's the close session is to review and consider proposals and strategy for the city's position during collective bargaining negotiation.
And, uh, thank you viewers, we are going to go off screen. And we will also adjourn off stream as well, and either seven thirty.
Close session, seven thirty.
And.